Yeah. It's interactive.
But it's a
Oh, I know. It's kind of, but I know during the day. Shouldn't have been there. It's awesome. So I'm looking for that. It's perfect. My personal honor.
All right, great.
And she will actually call today.
Did you? Did you talk to the company?
Do I need to talk to someone?
I just see one thing. They need to punch stop. I don't agree. She said some trash.
But like I said, we'll catch up. We could get thrown far tonight.
I know. I was like.
He doesn't get out of this because she has a lot of backgrounds and stuff.
I know. I was like.
He doesn't get out of this because she has a lot of backgrounds and stuff. She's actually one here. She wanted to. One minute she didn't call up and she can't be here. So I brought Lisa for questions. I guess she'll be here for a while. She can answer the questions I can't answer. It's fine. I watched it. I watched it.
Hello.
The chief of the first district, I just noticed.
Hey, Eric. How was Thanksgiving?
She made me one. Soon as she got off.
It's like too much to worry about. It's much than you guys. Can I ask anything? I said, if it's, if it's a lot, then that's.
Um, do you have a budget? Oh, you know, I think I have a general budget. Is it separated on my?
Uh, yeah, my portion.
What's that?
My portion. This is. It was half.
Fourteen three oh eight.
Yes.
Um, this does not vary. I just got a copy. And I have to give you. Twenty-eight, seven, three, seven thirty. Eighteen minutes. You guys, you guys just split it down the number.
Right.
Yeah, fourteen, three sixty-five.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions.
I mean, we haven't finalized any budget. Yes. Perfect. Uh, no, I don't. I, we start to figure that out. That'll help me come up with a number. So. We heard from Nancy? I think a couple more minutes and we'll start because we have.
Oh, she's quarantining. Can we, can we still meet if she's not here?
Yep, we have a four. Two is all we need. All right then. Seven o'clock. I'll call me to order. We have a very robust agenda tonight. Um, again, I will, uh, repeat as a benefit for people who are watching online. Uh, up here, there's a post-it number, uh, post-it note on the floor just as a marker. Uh, if you're addressing the board, um, it would be helpful if, uh, you were up at the marker and indicating who you are so that people can know, uh, as part of the meeting. Uh, first up, Chief Buxton. Uh, we want to bring you back to talk about your budget and the options that you had outlined in your prior meeting.
I put some, uh, a couple more.
Thank you.
Rough fingers together about the, 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 obviously set in stone. And since we talked, I talked to some other, uh, chiefs, um, in opposition, our size and our, our same makeup of, um, you know, what, what they're doing to try to get, um, you know, more people to go on calls as well. Improvement. Um, I've talked to a couple chiefs who use some pretty healthy recruitment companies that got nothing.
Yep.
And it just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a dive break. It is the, the, the time, uh, that needs to be committed. The way our relations have gone to it, it's just, it's getting more and more difficult for somebody who's not, you know, who carries a full-time job to vote in, uh, to, um, get the certifications and the maintain. It's not getting any better. I would guess where, since, since we talked last time, I had one more of our, um, um, offices. So then on the five, very much years retired, um, he's had enough. So it's, it's not getting any better. It's, I don't, wouldn't consider critical, but I'm considering it's close to getting critical as, as we can go.
Yep.
I'm not saying any of this is going to work. Uh, if you kind of look at this, I put in some, um, you know, the, the mid and the max that it would be, um, uh, you know, honestly, I think it's going to probably be more in between the totals on, uh, you know, one or two member response. I don't believe you're going to get three people sign up every night of the week. And this, this is kind of set up for days on, excuse me, for nights, Monday through Thursday. Uh, I think that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there'd be more people around, not, not where it will work. And, um, days would be Monday through Friday. I think the days is still going to be extremely weak. No matter what, you know, we do have some, um, some, um, firefighters that live in town that are working for other departments that, um, that are kind of stolen out of environment. I remember much of a lot of them may be more willing to, while they're sitting at home, sign on for a day shift.
Yep.
Um, again, you know, if they sign on for a day shift, they would have further form of calls. So it, it may help, help us a little bit. Um, it may alleviate some of, some of it from some of the older guys. I know I was back from midnight, mm, at least five times last week. And it's getting old, you know? So, you know, sometimes a little, a little incentive brings some of the younger folks. We get some guys that are, that are young, that are, that are currently certified and stuff like that. It's just, you know, it's kind of tough for them to get out of bed at night, thirty, eighty. You know, a little, a little money incentive may, make a difference. I don't think it's cure all.
Right.
You know, I've been discussing back and forth with Newmarket, trying to combine some resources here. Um, if we, if we were to do that, we'd have to look at it like, you know, if we're going to help Newmarket, maybe Albus, Newmarket doesn't stay this policy. So, you know, I can't ask these guys to come over, you know, and, and, um, not return the favor.
Of course. Of course.
So, you know, these are, these are, um, you know, I don't know where it would be. I don't think we would ever be in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range a year. I would like to think that we would never be worrying about this.
Probably not, right?
But I think I'm going to be in the more of the, you know, s, you know, sixty and on the high end or on the eighty spent possibly. I, I don't know until we really track it out here. I don't, I don't ever see it going over that much.
So what, what do you think, uh, it sounds like you, you're thinking of at least initiating this on a Monday, on a Monday through Thursday on call shift?
Yeah, you know, Monday through Thursday, that would be, that would be nice.
Six to six. Yep.
And Monday through Friday would be during the days. That would be six to six. I go Friday because people.
Nice.
Work five days.
Yep.
You know, you're gonna, you, you're, you're, um, enrolling, you sign up for shifts. It's going to be a long period during the days if people have jobs.
Yep.
And I wouldn't ever, wouldn't expect to see more than one or two people sign up, you know, at night for a shift or during the day.
So you're expecting one to two people to be on a shift basically from Monday through Fridays?
I would like to see that, but I, I'm guessing it'd be days when there's one.
Right.
There's going to be days when there's zero.
Right.
And we're going to rely on, you know. Must hold up.
It's, it's going to rely on the current system.
Yeah.
To work.
Right.
Right.
Where do you, what do you see long-term? Like I, I'm hearing you that this is a problem, but like it's there. Have you thought at all about, you know, other solutions other than this? Like what next steps might be or you don't sound terribly confident that this is going to work. So I'm just wondering if you have a vision for where?
Well, I, I'm not saying that I'm confident it's going to work. I mean, we maintained, um, what we have now for a long time, but, um, you know, things change, um, the whole, you know, I wish that, that the state regulators would go back and look at these things and say, you know, you know, it's a great thing safety-wise. They put in a lot of these regulations, but they have hurt the industry. They've hurt the volunteers. You know, there are positions on the department where you don't have to be certified. You know, we can have, we can have people humping holes. We can have people running a truck and you don't need certification, but according to the state, according to all the things we go by, you have to have certification. You're required to have. So what it is, it's slowly taking people from, hey, I want to volunteer for the fire department. Okay, great. Now you take a two hundred and eighty hour course and now they used to, they used to have the one or two nights a week and a couple of weekends. And now they're lasting two or three, four nights a week and all weekends during it. And they have a very weak, so they take, they, they just make it more and more difficult along the way. You see it in all, all aspects. You see it in the police force, you know? You used to be able to have, I'm not speaking for you, you used to be able to have a, a part-time work, you know? It's, it's, so, you know, you got, you got a choice. You either try what you're doing, you're contracted with another department, you're contracted with another department, I guarantee you're going to spend a lot more money than this. Not only that, then your, your, um, your insurance rates are going to go up, your response time is longer. Um, and that, and that's significant. Or you hire a full-time up and full-time up of down in Newfield's.
It's hard to justify that.
When you hire a firefighter, they're going to want to be a firefighter. They're not going to want to be doing anything else other than, you know, better than that. And, you know, you, minimum, I mean, you get away with two. I mean, per NFDA, it's, you know, four. Well, I mean, you know, four full-time fighting.
That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the start.
Plus. And that's a second cell. And you're going to be rotating like, and nothing against them, you're rotating like Newmarket, rotating like all these smaller departments. You know, ideally, young folks get into the job because they want to be busy. When you're on a small department, you know, busy, they, they move to a, to a, you know, busier department. So you're talking a lot more money. I just think it, it's, it's not feasible for the town of Newfield to hire full-time firefighters. It's going to be sitting around looking at a lot. You know, they've already cleaned that station so many times.
Um, I, I assume that your, your fellow chiefs in, in, uh, in towns like ours are facing the same kind of problem. Have they indicated what, what they're going to go down when, when this all doesn't work?
Well, I mean, a lot. I mean, you get, you get departments as small as, um, East Kings, East Kings is hiring pretty.
They do pretty.
Yep, and it's costing a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, Ken Zing is looking at it. Stradon just recently does pretty. Small town like Lee Man, Lee's, Lee's full-time twenty-four seven. And they had, you know, they, they were getting, they're busier than we are.
Yeah.
Um, but they're not, they're not the next or, or, um, you know, Newmarket's a very busy department. But, you know, what comparable to Nottingham?
Kensington?
Kensington. You know.
Danden?
Newcastle.
Is Danden?
Danden, Danden's a little bit here and Danden's got a lot of more pressure.
Because on the one line, it's, yeah.
So, yeah. But they're all doing the same thing, they're trying to, you know, slowly try things to see if it works. If it doesn't work, you know, if we, if we don't get anybody to sign up for shifts and it doesn't work, we have to, we have to look at something else, you know?
So what we're looking at here though is, a, a, again, from a budget standpoint, it's a, a minimum one person and we're looking at another forty-three thousand dollars. Are, are you expecting to have two for all shifts? Probably not, right? We're going to be somewhere between forty-three and eighty-seven?
Well, yeah. And, and if you look at down here, it's paper call. Understand that anybody else that comes in on the call is a paper call. And I just kind of did that as, as, you know, figuring out what we had for opportunities over the last four or five years on average. And that, that would be that. Now, obviously, I can't, that's, that's the high end of both.
Yep.
But I just, you know, that's what we have in.
Yeah, I was just talking, for the on-call, we're talking about in between forty-three and eighty-seven and, and really on the, and in addition to that, another twenty-two, seven.
Right. I, that's why I said, you know, I honestly think we'll be in the sixty, you know, and I'm going to use sixty as a high, maybe sixty, the eighty range total. I, I can't see. I, you know, um, and then we got to figure out, you know, administration, you know, there's some administrative costs to this, you know? We have, currently have, um, a couple of software, um, apps that can take care of scheduling like that. So, you know, people could go in and see if there's anybody scheduled for that night and they could sign up and do it for that night.
Kind of.
Um, and then we can be reports and stuff done off that. So, you know, as far as keeping track of personnel and stuff, um, you know, going to calls and stuff like that, as long as they use the apps, it's, it's pretty simple. And, and, you know, down here, they could have access to that.
Okay. Okay. So we're looking at something around an eighty thousand dollar increase in budget?
That's, that's what I'm, you know. It's nothing that I, you know, it's nothing that I, obviously, nothing that even the violence problem, it's just it's getting to this.
I know, you guys live here and you've kept, I mean, again, I, you know, the firefighter has been volunteer for this long, since I've been here, your budget has been somewhere between seventy-five and eighty-six thousand dollars pretty much every single year.
Also, this is doubling it then? Doubling the budget?
What's that?
It's doubling your budget.
Pretty much. Pretty much. At least that's what we have to consider. I mean, at the end of the day, we have to make a budget recommendation of the town. So. So administratively, you think that this can be managed, probably some incremental cost in, in and above this, but not too much?
Yeah. I, I, it's, you know, I, I, I read, I think it's good, you know, I think it's, you know, payroll's right.
Yeah.
It's going to be more, more work for you.
Yeah, for, for Donna.
For Donna.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, okay. All right. Uh, it's all my questions. Do you have any?
Would you like to implement this for a year? How, how would we propose this to the town then? We would try this for a year and see if it works or how do you manage to get the?
Well, like everything else, everything in the budget is year to year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we implement this this year and it doesn't work, the budget conversation next year will, will be what do you think happened?
Right.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah, I think this, I think this is a year, I, I mean, honest, I think this is a year to, to, um, Dandy. Um, I think we're going to have a look at other places. Uh, I don't, I don't know what the answer is yet. Um, I definitely know that it's not, uh, higher than that.
Not, not to delve down the rabbit hole, but I mean, look clearly, there are lots of small towns in the state that are facing the same problem. I, I don't know if this is going to be done at the state level. I don't know if you guys have talked about it.
There's been a lot of talk. The union's pretty powerful.
Oh, I know.
And, and, uh, even though, you know, um, that's changed a little bit with some of the, the, the union president, the president is still pretty strong. But again, the ass and I look for, and there's a lot of federal money out there, uh, you know? But.
But, Lord, look, again, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this, but you know what? Making exceptions in the state law on certification for towns below a certain population that don't and can't afford full-time, to, to me, you know, all that's doing is going to be, be bringing in more people to firefighting that may eventually end up in Portsmouth and as a union firefighter. I don't know why they would oppose that, but that's.
When, when, when that was quoted with fact, I'm going to guess, I'm trying to think it, it was probably right around eighty-seven or eighty-eight.
Yeah.
I, for a fact, remember seventeen or eighteen people on the department at the time. Marked out. I'm not, I can't do this.
Right. And it's terms of certification.
Yeah, and then slowly as you go.
It bleeds.
It will be bleeds. And, you know, especially on the fence. That side is just, it's just getting, it's still taking. Um, they let me take more and more responsibility later, because you guys put more and more time on, on the budget.
No, I understand.
So.
All right, well, um, you know, we'll be finalized with the budget. I think December twenty-first is when we're going to shoot for getting our numbers all finalized together. I mean, this will be part of the discussion next week and twenty-first, and then we'll finalize and get your rights out. Any other questions?
That was my question, was how long you think? I, I was trying to figure out what your timeline is, like it's, like are we six months from, you know, disaster or what you said, like a year?
No, you know, I, I think you'll see the, the core group maintain it for a while. I'm never looking, you know, I'm not looking to get out of there, but just looking to know that we can't continue to do this, um, because it has to slowly, you know, drop out again.
There's not enough coming out of the river.
Guys, you know, the, the Tom Claws and stuff like that can still go and handle, uh, you know, thirty, forty, fifty percent of, of the calls, but, you know, Tom's not going to go and fire those fires or something like that. And, and Tom's got, I think this year's Tom's fifty-two years up in the market, you know? Your father's fifty-nine, yes, he's sixty years this year. Forty, uh, forty-three, forty-four, maybe a bunch, you know? And there's not a lot of ones, twos, and threes, and fours a year.
There's not a lot of fives or sevens, right? With, with, with at least a little experience. Yeah, you know? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, next up?
We're going to get, you know, you're going to get these, uh, place officers certified in firefighting.
Yeah, exactly. Good to have you on board. Wayne, uh, welcome aboard. Uh, before we get into your budget, um, let me just, uh, Jackie. For getting Wayne on board. And then. There are two copies here of the contract for Wayne. Wayne, you want us to just hang on to the contract copies until that's enough?
Okay.
Great. And then we'll, we'll just get your copy over there for your, for your body. And then. Did you want those to go by yours?
Was he going to sit around for the dispatch contract?
Discussion? Um, I don't think so, but.
Okay.
They, they split half the cost. For them, it's, and, and we have the dispatch contract, it's, you know, it'll be half the cost onto their budget. I, on my hand notes, I've already updated their number on the line item. So, uh, if there's any question, again, our budget's not going to be finalized tonight, so if there's anything else, we can, we can get back to Chief about it. Certainly they're after. Uh, did you get both of those?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I handed you both. Perfecto. Uh, okay, so, um, contract's good. Uh, your, uh, your commission here fulfilled into vacancy is signed off on. We'll get your copies of those when we get Nancy to sign those and your budget.
Perfect. Obviously, over the last two or three weeks, I've worked with Katie Ryan, who got in this because she's, um, she's located on the town of Newfield, so she was the active chief until, um, you know, until she left to her employment. So a lot of her, um, ideas, um, are put into this. She was unable to make it tonight last minute, but she is on the cover sheet here where, um, but I did have some input regarding this. Obviously, there's four or five major, I won't say major, but increases, a couple of them are out of our control and ones that means retirement. Last year, they increased the rates, has to do a lot of one, two thousand twenty-one, about thirty-three point eighty percent. So the increase of two thousand twenty-two is our total liability at thirty-three point eighty percent from full twelve months. Last year, it was six months, and we're not like six percent.
Yeah.
So that increase there, um, and then obviously it's involved a little bit too, these salaries that are going up, um, as well, um, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. So that fourteen, thirteen thousand plus increase for nature retirement is because the increase at the state level is July one, two thousand twenty-one, as well as the increased wages of the full-time employees, uh, for full-time employees that were allocated.
Yep.
Health insurance, that's a slight increase. Currently, we have four full-time employees, um, spotted, but we only have three. We have one family plan, which is myself. We have, um, one single plan, which is Officer Strand.
Yep.
And we have also, uh, South student, South of the Valley does not take medical insurance, it takes the dental insurance. So that being said, um, I did budget for two family plans because anticipating the vacancy that we fill at some point once I do the process, it's not planning that that person is going to have a family plan. I didn't much shortcut me, uh, my budget and stuff. Total liability of the funded, all four family plans would be eighty thousand change. So, uh, I did budget eighty thousand change because I don't have four family plans, but I just want to have a record that could change. I could have, I could lose two employees, um, in two thousand twenty-two that if I replaced those positions, they may have a family plan. So, um, I have to head up to this now with every officer here, but there's some potential that there could be some changes and stuff in the very near future. So I have to come ahead for that. So. That, one, a two person gap would make it easily become four. And I just don't know where in my budget I'm going to find that if I don't budget for it, but I also am trying to present real numbers to currently, but I also don't know if those are to opposite this year, meaning next year, meaning two thousand twenty-two.
So, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for just a second? So you have the forty-seven, eighty there right now?
Forty-seven, eighty, two family plans and one single plan. The permanent salary, the increase from that, um, obviously the traditional high salary for two thousand twenty-two, as well as, um, three full-time positions, which is Officer Strand, South of the Valley, and then an allocated lieutenant position, um, you know, depends on hiring, I'm not saying I'm bringing in a lieutenant, but obviously those funds are there. We did bring in for a five percent raise because of what the current mechanism of climate is with inflation and stuff like. We did bring in for a five percent raise because of what the current mechanism of climate is with inflation and stuff like that. And five percent, I still think, I mean, I've never seen it this high in my twenty-seven years in armed enforcement. But I think that if we wanna retain and recruit officers, we have to give them what is the current climate. And I think five percent is fair this year. Next year, my idea, I have a two, two and a half. I don't know. But all we know now is the cost of everything, food and groceries and everything like that. I think five percent is fair, especially when inflation is between six point one and six point three, I believe, currently.
Did Lieutenant O'Brien, or maybe DC, you know, the past past increases for salary has it been two, or?
I think everyone was giving it differently. I, I feel like I asked questions through Chief Leibner. It was like he increased different employees at different rates.
Yep.
From my, yeah, I think it's unfair for me to give a different A rate to a different employee this year because I don't know the staff. And and I haven't conducted any employee evaluations in place, so the employees don't know what their expectations are. And this is my day two, so moving forward, I anticipate handing out A raises upon evaluations. This year, I don't have that, I don't have any feedback from Chief Leibner, who was here for three months, and then obviously Lieutenant O'Brien, who's been gone for three months. I think with the current state of the economy, I think five percent is fair, especially when we are shorthanded. It's gonna help with recruitment, it's gonna help with current retention, which we know that that is me already in age. The non-permanent salary, that's a huge jump. I don't understand why it's been so low. I did inquire with Lieutenant O'Brien, who got in that level, and she said it was never an issue because the department's not a full staff. And I think it comes back to when Officer Schwartz was made a part-time lieutenant, and Chief Leibner went from four full-timers to three full-timers, and then basically was taking paying for the salary items on the line item. So the permanent salary is for full-time patrolmen for the year. The non-permanent salary is for part-timers to cover minimal of a certain amount of hours, and I believe it's nine hundred and eighty hours, and that's banking on me carrying over a hundred hours, ten days a year, because I'm banking on that, and I'm banking on Officer Schloss, Sergeant LaValle, doing the same thing. Total liability should be about eleven hundred and eighty hours. You have to cover my twelve holidays, which is a hundred and twenty hours. You have to cover at least twenty-six days of my vacation, at least twenty-six days of Sergeant LaValle. And I'm banking on the other officers who have less time on, so they have less current time. I'm anticipating they're gonna use all their current time. So I average that out, multiply it by the average of the part-time hourly rate, which is from Officer Schwartz down to Officer Hudson and Officer Drew Fessin. So I average that, multiply it by nine eighty, and that's where I came up with the, with the thirty, excuse me, the twenty-five thousand. Now, I did look back at past budgets in that line, and two thousand eighteen was twenty-eight nine ninety, and two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-nine four oh eight. Two thousand twenty, it was thirteen one four four, but it was thirty-two eight nine two percent. And then two thousand twenty-one, we're budgeting eighty-five hundred, and as of just a few weeks ago, we're at thirty-one six two six. So that non-permanent salary item has always been around, actually, it's been higher than around the ocean right now. So that's the decrease this year, but I don't understand it because every other year, it's been between twenty-eight and thirty-two thousand dollars a year to cover the time off for the offices. Meanwhile, the overtime budget has stayed the same. I'm banking on the part-time officers that we have will continue to work. We are lucky that we have the two part-time officers that we have that are working. However, that will change January first. We had a state emergency in July, June, January first to July, June thirtieth, that part-time is to work unlimited hours. July one, it goes back to the old system, part-time is gonna work thirteen hundred and similar hours. So that's about twenty-five and a half hours a week. Right now, Officer Hudson's is working forty hours a week. He will not be able to do that January first. So I'm hoping, I'm trying to get up the staff as quickly as possible, but I also know that I can't have Officer Hudson's work all these hours as he's gonna shut down July, and he's gonna be no good for the final six months of two thousand twenty-two. Every other line item has pretty much stayed the same. I don't know if the dispatch contract or not. Per the contract, I understand it's a three-year contract. We are actually in year number two because they did not send over the contract in year one, which was last year, so we're right on the limit. How I read the contract is the two thousand twenty-two figures, the two thousand twenty-one numbers are increased by what the CPI is, the Boston-based CPI. And I believe Officer, Lieutenant O'Brien spoke to Chief George in Market, he brought those numbers. So I'm funding right there, unless it was five point something percent, that is an increase for the police budget. And the other item is funded by the fire department. So that's out of our control as well, of the increase of the dispatch fees. Everything else looks the same. As I said, the A drive, the four highway guidance, those are major increases for the two thousand twenty-two contract.
Okay, um, so, I mean, bottom line is most of your budget is payroll, pretty much. I'm looking at, again, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to review this in detail. But looking at your page on wages for two thousand twenty-one, and you posed, are you, are you looking at twenty-eight hours for you, Chief Riley, and Officer Strand?
Actually, yeah.
On this sheet?
Yep.
Is it your estimate that you're, you're gonna have two thousand eighty hours for you, incoming lieutenant, Sergeant LaValle, Officer Strand?
Well, that's forty hours of work for a fifty-two week period.
I'm assuming that you're, that's, you're gonna be banking on that?
I, well, like I said, I may have some shifts in staff in two thousand twenty-two, but I need to come in ahead and be fully staffed for full year.
And how many part-time hours are you anticipating?
I'm anticipating at least the nine eighty to cover the current time off for the full-time patrolmen. Now, that being said, that is not full liability. That is not, that is with me carrying over ten days, that is with Sergeant LaValle carrying over ten days. And that's not, that's not count any unforeseen emergencies, storms, anything. This is bare, in my opinion, this is not, definitely not total liability. This is, total liability will be at least another two hundred hours plus, just.
It sounds like.
It sounds, it, it looks like a big jump, eighty-five hundred to where we are today, but it was always funded that way in the past, and I just don't understand why it hasn't been, because it's not, I know they haven't been fully staffed in two thousand twenty-one, but I don't wanna go ahead into two thousand twenty-two thinking I'm not gonna be fully staffed because I'm not presenting appropriate budgets at the time.
I'm curious, I understand your reasoning, but I'm also kind of curious as to why you didn't put a little bit of extra into that number, given historically what we've spent.
In the present budget?
It, yeah, it doesn't seem to, unless you're foreseeing a decrease in what we've spent over the past years, it seems more appropriate that we leave that number closer to thirty.
But I'm also keeping being realistic with what I have for part-time, so they don't have to tell us or how vague I may work a lot by myself, I know the mess that Chiefs have worked here sometimes were, you know, head coverage while they were at the meetings, and maybe two days a week head coverage. I'm still gonna be involved in those meetings because I think it's sort of a network, but I think with the increase of five percent tonight.
Well, the non-permanent salary for this year isn't enough, if anything.
Yes.
Because we have not had a chief, and we've required basically part-timers to fill a tremendous amount of hours this year, which is why the actual school of permanent salary is sized below.
Yeah.
So understand, understand what's driving that number.
No, I understand, but you had said in twenty-eight ninety.
Yeah, in the last few years, the number in that non-permanent salary was, two thousand eighteen was twenty-eight nine ninety, two thousand nineteen was twenty-nine four oh eight, two thousand twenty was cut down to thirteen one four four, which I don't know why because I wasn't here, but the actual expenditures under that line item, that year was thirty-two eight nine two. And then this year, you can, you can watch this year because we know what happened this year. That number under the non-permanent salary is so high, but to make it up for it, because you haven't had a full-time amount for a year, almost two, maybe was here for twenty-five something a year. But the funding has always been in that line item in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, and I think it was cut in two thousand twenty, and I think that was right around the time Bill Quobie was around the time that Officer Schwartz, you know, retired and posted that he was made a part-time lieutenant in the department.
Mm-hmm.
Bill Quobie, but I'm believing that's why that line item went down substantially, as he was filled on the basic role of a full-time officer. I think that number, like I said, like you said, in my short change myself, I was trying to be as realistic as possible with this budget. Would it be nice to have an extra one hundred hours in a year? But I think with the increases, but I also know it's gonna be difficult, you know, this year with the limited hours that Officer Hudson has. And, you know, my goal is to try to hire some part-timers, but that's gonna take some time, and just like the fire departments have issues with retention recruitment, police departments, agencies around here are hired at the same time, and these are key positions. There are a lot of agencies around here hiring. So I have to be creative on how I receive and try to fulfill our roster.
Line three ninety is other professional services. What does that entail?
Other professional services, that is our computer maintenance bills.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're contracted, see, that.
Right.
That is our annual contract. I am seeing other software that we use for reports.
Yep.
Yeah, it adds pretty much the computer usage.
Okay. So you're, you're certainly running under budget. Are those contracts monthly, or are they?
They're annual.
Annual?
Yep, annual with IMC and the maintenance contract with the computer company of CCS, that was an annual.
Okay.
We also purchase computer software and replace needed workstations out of that budget. We haven't made those purchases yet because, to be honest, with the open to, Chief Young came here yesterday. I was a trick of spending money.
Yeah, I understand.
Without getting fooled somewhere.
No, I understand. Okay.
So that's where I went under right now.
All right.
If we know the gas prices have skyrocketed over the year, I kept that line item the same, I'm being creative. Right now, the officers are filling with their flex cards at the two gas stations we have in town. I contacted the state, the state pump shop we're happening, right, the former Petty Road in one twenty-five, where state blue spares are. The state lock-in right now is a dollar ninety-five. That is good until approximately July of twenty-two, the new rates coming out. So we're gonna cross this amount of all the pay for, so instead of, I think it's three thirty-five here, we get the forty-five cent discount for state taxes, we're paying two ninety-five. I'm gonna, once we get this established, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be saving a dollar a gallon pumping capacity. It's gonna take a little, it's gonna take an extra five minutes, but nothing for nothing, it's three minutes from the top line, get fuel at the state pump, and that's why I kept that line item up for the fuel at that, even though the prices are a dollar plus a gallon from this time compared to last year this time.
All right. Any other questions?
The only other thing I did not put in here is a cruiser. I think we have one cruiser that might be on its last legs. I haven't been able to totally have it mechanical for completely, but I did speak to a couple of officers. It's a two thousand fifteen Ford Explorer, a December cruiser. The miles is fairly low, it's like seventy, but the hours, it's a formula that you do that we have, the ideal hours, the engine hours, and you add up, and with that, it's well over a hundred and fifty thousand miles with the idle hours. It's being used a lot of details, it's idle a lot, so that adds to it. Currently, we have over twenty-one thousand dollars in the DTO revenue account. I also know that there's some go-for funds, I don't know, I don't know if rules pertain to that. I also know we can do the warrant application process, but I also know there's extra money in this year's budget. I did reach out to the state debate on the cruises, which has been filed for in Exeter. They've had a debate for the last two years. It's usually, it's been Irving Motors in Columbia or Hillsboro Ford, Hillsboro, New Hampshire. I spoke to the fleet manager at McFarland, saying, here are the prices on three different types of cruises. It all depends on the packages and the options and stuff like that. March is a possibility at the cruiser, but he's telling me that if I order it, I might not get it until November, which is almost two thousand twenty-three. I did inquire if we had the funding this year, we could pay for it, which would be helpful, we didn't have to do a warrant application, or had money to the budget in two thousand twenty-two. He says a lot of departments have put an extra, the dozen, extra bought three cruises using money, funding that they had in their budget. So that is something that I would like to proceed with, but I absolutely wanna leave that into what you think is the best avenue to offer.
What's the cost of the cruiser, plus fit up in a big?
It depends. The, the base cruiser is about thirty-one thousand. They do have a new one out in hybrid, which Exeter and Newmarket, Hampton Falls have gone to that, that saves money in the long run. It's an extra two hundred, five hundred, three thousand dollars. Basically, it, it's a hybrid. It's eco-friendly, it, it, at stop signs, it's not that stops running, the idle, when you're stopped, say, your running station, your radar, radar, car stops, it shuts off. If you're on a detail, it shuts off, your lights are running, and then when it needs charging for the lights, it turns on. So overtime saves gas. And then the higher option is just for a bigger engine, which I don't think we need. So it's even, it's thirty-one change for the three-point-three-liter base unit, and it's about thirty-three change for the hybrid, I believe. Make up, I did not have opportunity today to call the vendors, but looking back on past budgets, when Chief Leibner backed in two thousand twenty, he spent almost ten thousand dollars to, so I would say it's gonna be about forty-five thousand completely to, for a cruiser, not still else. Now, if we don't go that route, potentially we do a bare minimum cruiser, where we have two-line cruises here with radars and stuff like that. If money's in the chute, maybe we could go with something less that, I, I don't need all the bells and whistles in my car and stuff like that, so if it was savings and stuff like that, we could look at that route, but I definitely think there's a need, especially when the production lines were slower during COVID, and they're saying I may not get the construction till November twenty-two.
How quickly can you get a detailed idea of how you fit this up and in the final cost?
Meaning the cruiser?
Yep.
I would say a couple of days to the end of this week, as long as the vendor's coming back.
I would suggest you do that, email us, because again, this is, I, my opinion, I, I would prefer to keep it off of next year's budget. And then you can get a surprising. And then if you get a surprising, we can look at it. If you get into a contract, we can always encumber and then figure out how to break it down between that or the detail funding.
The detail funding in the two thousand twenty-one budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm hoping that, Bonnie, some of the fund, as of one and thirty, I have twenty-three cents in there. I believe this is not a cover. They're really expensive for payroll and any other expenses we have. And my, I'll check it tomorrow. I believe that you could be, your cruiser, our best, especially when the funding isn't that lineup of the full-time salary that we have expended this year.
Yeah, again, get us, get us, if you can get a firm quote, it's helpful, because when we enter into encumbrance, typically you have to have a contract for encumbrance. And so if we're going to encumber funds because of a delay in any of this, you know, having that, that form, firm quote will allow us to do that. So if you can get, do that over the next few days, email it around to all the select board. Over the next two meetings, my guess is we can find a solution.
We have dates on the next two meetings.
Seventh and the twenty-first.
I'll have it on the second, but you'll have to buy the seventh.
Okay, that'd be great.
Is there any additional costs? Like if we, if we went with the hybrid, do we have to install a charging station here or anything like that?
No, no. Like I said, I haven't had an opportunity. I know I've had some notes all the time, why I made this transition over here. Like one of the units, the radar's not working, the radio, but I have to look at everything because we're to management, see where, I'm just, I've been here two days.
No, 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 of course. No, 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 and that's my suggestion. If you can get us harder numbers, we can, without you having to try to figure out a solution, you know, that's our job. And so I think that we can, like I said, I think between the detail fund and the potential for twenty twenty-one money, I think we should be able to figure something out.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is the unencumbered funds balance also an option?
No.
For a cruiser?
No. That's, that's only for the end of the year for tax setting purposes. That's not.
No, I said, I know that a cruiser, I think we have about twenty-one thousand in the detail revenue account.
In the detail? Again, I don't, I, my intention isn't to radiate for every dime, but I think that, again, depending on the numbers, depending upon what's available or what we expect will be available under your twenty twenty-one line, and, you know, most of the other budget lines are coming in line, so we'll have some play there. I fully anticipate we'll have some play. But we're going to have to get some hard numbers to be able to.
I have another one question.
Ask one.
For the help with the cruiser, we need to get three different estimates or do we go without a regular hour band that we use directly here?
Preferably you're getting quotes, but given the short time nature that we're looking at, I would personally love to look at ski with that.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Also local chiefs that have done this, and I will find a.
Again, we're trying to do this, obviously, under the press schedule. Normally, we plan it, you know, cruisers, what about Warren, our first two in March? But, you know, obviously, given the budget opportunity here and the timing, you know, there is an opportunity to do without having to do a warrant. So we can shoot for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? No. Uh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, we're going to bring that up. Can you pull up one second? I'll bring this up now so that these guys can go. So dispatch contracts, Jack, you should have, you should have a copy of your package of the contract with Newmarket for dispatch. As Chief mentioned, this is a three-year agreement. First year was twenty-eight, seven, thirty, and it goes up by the C P, the Boston CPI. This is typically split between police and fire. We moved to this after being on county for some time, moved back to the statutes, which we were on before. Any questions you have about the contract? With that, I will make a motion that we approve the contract provided by Newmarket for dispatch services.
Can I make one comment before?
Feel free.
I have a break by contract. I do, obviously, I just, I don't know all the facts and circumstances, but I do know that ambulance and fire services go through the market.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a time that the police department was dispatched by Brock County and then the fire department was dispatched by Newmarket. There's a sixty-day help clause in the contract.
Yep.
But it does not specify, by how I read it and interpret it, it's for both the police and fire. I'm not ready to make a decision regarding that. Obviously, I know if we go over the Brock dispatch, there's no fees, it's free, but there's pros and cons. I've had twenty-seven years of experience with working in dispatch, however, I don't have any experience in the market, so I can't sit here and make an opinion right now without having any data or facts and circumstances to back that up. But I would like an opportunity, if it presents itself, where Chief Buxton might not want to leave because the ambulance and fire services will be dispatched through Newmarket. However, the police have no ties to the ambulance service. So I would like possibly have something in there that is a sixty-day help clause for either the police and or fire department. And I don't think that's unreasonable, but I'm just trying, I might have a opinion after a year. I know it's year two, but, you know, it is, that fee is going up every year.
So just as, as history, actually, the police department, where the driver shifting back from Brockhampton to, to Newmarket, they, they found that the, the lack of resources at the county were not the best for police dispatch. Is that correct? I mean, and to be honest, the fire department, I think, was perfectly happy at county, although, you know, they recognized that there were some issues. But I think that the move was actually driven by the police department to go back to Newmarket. We were at Newmarket, we left Newmarket because their contract was, got entirely out of control. Brockhampton County did fine for years, but over time, I think that they just became constrained by the amount of people that they had working on dispatch. So that's when we moved back to Newmarket. I, I don't have a problem with entering into this for the year. I would imagine, you know, my guess is, is that if you have a conversation with Chief Buxton, you have a problem with Newmarket dispatch, you want to go back to county, it's certainly something that I don't think he will, he will stop. He may even encourage it, given the fact that it's fourteen thousand dollars out of his budget as well. I am inclined to sign this contract as is right now, not push for changes, given time and where we sit. Can you live with Newmarket dispatch for a year?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's my understanding that it's a three-year contract for our agency.
Exactly.
And it's a sixty-day clause, so if something major happens, you know, and it'll be wrong for me to leave without, it might be the best in this, unless, I don't know, but I think at the end of a year, I think I'll have enough information, looking at the budget and the funding that's there, and make a decision there.
No, and look, I would encourage you to have conversations if you have questions about dispatch with, with Chief Buxton, but from my understanding and everything that this town went through, both getting off of the market and getting back on, this makes the most sense, given, given the requirements and the fact that the county has not been the best in, in maintaining their dispatch services.
How long ago were we with the county?
Chief?
How long ago were we with the county versus Newmarket?
We were with the county before this contract, but we were with the county for five or six years.
So that's even longer, I think, but we went back, went back to Newmarket.
County started getting overwhelmed.
Six, seven years, huh?
The county started to get overwhelmed in terms of dispatch.
Yeah, and things are different now with technology, as much radio traffic, the NBTs and the cruisers, the officers are wearing a lot of stuff in their cruisers. They do dispatch from other towns, but in my experience, the radio traffic and, and they're dealing with the same choices as every public safety personnel, human staff, and I'm sure the same goes for Newmarket. So, but like I said, I, I don't have enough time on to make that decision right now.
So it does say here in number four, that does either town terminate the contract specifying the other town the sixty-day.
Yeah, it does have a sixty-day.
It does, that's the argument. So, I'm working on a jump in the, you know, Chief Austin, I think that would be a discussion if we win it. So, discuss.
So we don't necessarily, we need to sign this for three years. We can sign it and you can get your deed under you and maybe revisit it in a few months.
Well, no, I mean, we're signing a three-year contract, but there are out clauses that if and when you decide to execute on them, we'd have to pay a pro-rata share for that order that we get out, but, you know, it is a three-year contract. Just so that I'm really clear.
Right, but if I'm reading this correctly, it is a three-year contract unless we give Newmarket sixty-day notice.
Yes, the out clause.
Right, it's an out clause.
Yes, so we can sign it tonight, but it's not blocking you until anything for the three years.
I'll make a motion to approve the town of Newmarket dispatch service agreement.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
Do you have two copies today?
I only have one.
Jen, do you have?
Jen, can I ask a question? I think all I have is a simple request. Captain Ray, I'm here for a second. Could we, could a member of our board and our viewers get together over the post office, come meet privately in the post office or something and then come back to the work?
Um, yeah, I think, did you send an email to Ray earlier tonight about, it was put to be on next meeting?
Oh, next meeting?
It was a minor mistake. I saw him in this afternoon.
Oh.
He scheduled for seven, the seventh at seven P.M. So he had made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
One of the, I didn't say it was dispatch.
We, we did receive, we did receive this, but this will be on the agenda for next meeting.
But maybe one can think about that. I think if we speed it up, if two people get together, we can see, come up with something and then present it mutually.
Yep.
All right.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's not your fault. It's electronic. I can imagine with dispatch.
Exactly, it's just one copy. Will you make a copy for us? I hope we don't need a regular. Right, signed copy, we'll send a signed copy to them, we'll keep a, a copy for our files.
I have a, I have.
You have a hard copy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great, we'll sign a signed copy, yeah. Let's, let's sign a signed copy, just so there's originals. All right, so. One last note, just for the general public, on the fifteenth at six P.M., we'll have your swearing in along with a meet and greet with the general public. That's on a non-meeting night, so that nobody is pressed for time.
Thanks for your answer.
It's a Wednesday.
Yes, it's a Wednesday the fifteenth, sorry about that. I think that's it for you guys, so you can stick around if you'd like. All right, Sue.
Okay. Your full question.
Great. Denied, denied, denied.
And we'll start with the executive.
Sure.
Yep, okay, okay. So this year, an overall increase of four thousand dollars, which represents three percent. It does, my budget does include a five percent increase in wages for myself, Donna, and Kisha, which those increased wages do drive up the retirement social security with Medicare, and that's all included in here. One, the health insurance did go down. I changed my family plan to the two-person, and the rate also went down eighty percent. So there's quite a big savings there, thirty-six hundred dollars less than last year, and the dental also went down a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Pretty much all the same.
Let's go forward. All right, elections?
Elections and vital statistics, this one is up six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This is due to the three elections we have in twenty twenty-two. Not much we can do about that. The town report last year, as you recall, we had a very nice town report. They cost us a little bit more money, but that new town report, I love it.
Yes.
Finally cabinet, it takes up too much room.
Because of the, because of the spiral binding.
Because of spiral binding. So I am going to get another quote for the way, we used to have them, I don't know if they have them, but it's the.
The paper bound.
The paper, I know, it's nice. Maybe we can get a glossy cover or something different, but I can't do a spiral bound anymore. Takes up too much.
I get it.
Okay, so, so that line might come down, the town report line?
No, we'll leave it.
I left it at fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
We put it online, we only have two hundred copies made now, it's not a big deal. Of course, I had to go up on the stipends for the poll workers, Paul Wilber, the.
I was going to say, the stipends went up?
No, the stipends did not go up. They increased due to the three elections.
Oh, just in terms of the number of.
Yes, they did more often when there's three elections. And then, of course, the ballot machine and the programming of that, that fee has gone up three times.
On the ballot machines?
Yes.
I've had this conversation with you in the past. Has the state figured out new machines?
Not yet.
Okay, so this is obviously operating under our old machine. We're not buying up a new machine until when? Do you estimate? Next fiscal year or the year after that, you mean?
I'm thinking twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, not this year, but you're reading the next year's budget.
Yeah, so we'd like to see them in twenty twenty-two, but it doesn't look like that.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Yes.
Just want to get time, it sounds.
And then vital statistics fees, those are fees we pay into the state. Those were up because I provide more certified copies to our residents. And then the vital records preservation, I like to put that two thousand dollars in every year for the preservation of our old records, the minutes of meeting.
Why was that up so much this year?
Because we added in, because I had a large book now, and I had put a little extra money in there for, oh my goodness, Sue, for elections, we had for Paul Wilber.
Oh.
To make sense of that.
I see, okay.
I couldn't encumber it here, so I put it in there for last year.
I got it. Okay. Questions on elections?
I don't understand what you're referring to, the call of your Wilber. Paul Wilber had provided us with election, food for the election, but we didn't pay him in twenty twenty.
Okay.
He asked us if you could pay him in twenty twenty-one, so I thought we could encumber the funds, but then you can't really do that without, I don't know why we didn't encumber the funds, but.
We did into, into this line I forty-one forty.
This, this line includes election items and vital statistics.
Right. All right, financial administration?
Financial administration is up fifty-four hundred dollars.
All on the audit.
Yeah, so we, everything is the same except for the audit. They are increasing their fees by five thousand dollars, so I don't know if that's something you'd like to put out to bid.
Yes.
And that's a big increase for one year.
We need to, we, as good, good financial practice, we should put out a lot of that to bid periodically.
Sure. And then, as you can see, we don't have a deputy treasurer, so that line stays, we appropriate the five hundred, but we don't have anyone in that position. And same with the positive pay service, the eventuals, it would cost a thousand dollars per year, but they have to charge us, so I was going to. was wondering.
Uh, just having one of them.
But it should be, they just.
Yeah, yeah, just in case they ask. All right.
So we'll put that out to bid, okay?
Uh, yes, I would, I would prepare something to put that out to bid.
Okay.
They've been jacking up the fees. I don't have a tremendous problem with their audit, but again, as good fiscal practice, we should rotate auditors periodically.
Well, for the last two years, they did most of it all, well, in twenty twenty, it was all through the email, all virtual. And then this past year, they came here two times, one girl, I believe, two times. I mean, they did spend a lot of time here. And I'm sure they do a lot in their office, but.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, questions, Jackie, on financial administration?
No.
Great. Rebound?
Rebound property, uh, Ross, contract went up a little bit. Um, is that a good number? Or?
Avatar kiosk and cartographic oral contractual, correct?
Yes, they are, yeah, and those have gone up. So a total of six hundred dollars on this line in interest.
Mm-hmm. Planning and zoning?
Please don't make these things, no changes. I don't see where we could really take away anything either.
And again, pretty straightforward.
User subscriptions is on.
That's on account, right?
Rocking out.
Yeah, planning.
Planning permission.
Yep. Uh, government buildings?
I don't definitely think. Well, so as you can see in government buildings, uh, we have the part-time salaries, the cleaning, telephone internet, New Horizon and Comcast. I'm leaving that, I mean, I think it should stay about the same. Of course, it's your ultimate decision, but, uh, as you know, Jeff Fitch was looking into a new.
Phone system?
That comes in over the internet.
Yep.
He hasn't provided us, provided us with any quotes yet, but he intended to bring them to us and present it to the select board.
Okay.
So I was gonna leave that alone, but hopefully it will go down. I'm not sure. And then I don't know anything about electricity costs. Are those going up?
Probably.
I put a little extra in that one. Heat, oil, you know, that's up.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's been down for the year, but probably going to go up for next year, so again, we overestimated it for last year, but we're, you know, we're probably gonna come back to that number this year. Uh, so water and sewer.
Yeah.
Um, one thing I think that, um, and we'll have to have further conversations about this next week, is whether the town does a transaction with the water and sewer department in lieu of water fees, presumably for both the fire department and for town hall. So that's an opportunity for us to save some money there, depending upon how that gets structured. So just keep that in mind, you know, we may, we may end up at a zero on that line for the next ten years. Something has been discussed, but we haven't found out yet.
And then under repairs and maintenance, this is that catch-all pot where we, like we had the AC unit installed, that was five thousand dollars, purple hot signs, town hall railing up front.
Yep.
And also the, I listed it separately down at the bottom, but the town hall streams, we took that money out of this line item also.
Right, right.
And then the alarm security and ground scooping is going, that's the same, but I have an extra.
So we just go back to repairs and maintenance. Right now, we're running either around sixty-two hundred?
Sixty-two, but you have to include that. We don't have to include the town hall stream.
Right, uh, I mean, I prefer to move the town hall actually up into probably the telephone[863.82][863.85]internet.
Okay.
As it's an internet service for the town. Either that or, you know, honesty, um, you may want to put it under.
Oh, we have the other general government?
Uh, other general government, that's what I was looking for, yep. That's where Avatar is, right? Yeah, Avatar.
Tax.
I would move the town hall streams to other general government because this is, you know, this is more, it's not a government building, I mean.
Oh, you can.
I would, I would suggest you move town hall streams to there.
Okay, yeah. Perfect. And then I got that main, like we had the main street out, it's in there.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that line will go away. Hydrants are fine, uh, rats keeping our share, yep.
The total will decrease then by forty, actually, I mean, I had it at the same, the same is forty-eight thousand sixty. So forty-eight thousand sixty minus the eighteen hundred dollars?
Which eighteen hundred you got?
Town hall streams are going to be moving to other general.
Oh, you mean from the forty-eight thousand on the right hand column?
Yes.
Yeah, I take the eighteen hundred off. Uh, now, let me go back to the repairs and maintenance line.
Okay.
So with repairs and maintenance, what are we expecting on repairs and maintenance on this building for next year? Is there anything pressing that we know of? I mean, I know we did clearing over here, um. Probably need some general maintenance here. I know the gutters still need to be cleaned. I was up there.
Oh, okay, so the gutters still need to be cleaned, um, I don't know, what do you think about these windows?
Well, that's, you and I talked about this, and that's one thing to look at. Why don't we, at least for now, let's consider, um.
Well, we need the sidewalk out front right now, too.
Okay, you could have that, I think, all that repointing.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, all right, let's, let's, let's think about leaving the line item where it is.
Okay.
And I, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we really have nothing to do, we can lower the line item, Lord knows the budget is going up.
Right.
But, uh, why don't we leave the line item for now and then think about that?
So I recall that, um, the, off the garden, what, another group wanted to do some workaround here?
Yeah, they were supposed to get back with to the budget, um, they.
The walkway garden, I think?
They had talked about the walkway, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, look, we can practically do it. There's nothing stopping us from getting somebody in here to, to basically, um, fix the steps.
Yeah. Especially with the election coming up next year, there's gonna be mainly half a year break because that ramp is the beginning of.
Actually, the head cap ramp is a decent shed these days, which is good. Um, we do, what's that? I mean, that used to be weed infested.
Yeah.
All right, um, insurance line?
So the insurance went up, I mean, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. But every year, they make us budget more for the unemployment.
Yeah, the work, oh, the unemployment line is, yeah.
When there's no claims, they reduce it, you don't have to pay anything, so we still have to budget for it.
Yeah, it is what it is.
So, and leaves a quote right from Primex that they gave you.
I was gonna say, it's still Primex.
Yeah. So that's more money.
Uh, advertising, regional, and.
That's the same.
All right, other general government.
All right, so this one, uh, is up forty-four hundred?
Uh, it's, it's actually gonna go up because you're gonna break eighteen hundred town hall streams in here.
Yes.
CCS is jumping that much?
Okay, so this is the CCS, so we, we are, we've already actually spent seventy-eight hundred dollars this year. I only budgeted six thousand last year. Um, so obviously, we need more support from them because of those stupid things we called them for. Um, and we have no access to a server anymore, which is great. I don't want access to the server. I want to be able to call it, pick up the phone and say, help, I need your help. Wish they'd done. And in that line, I've also included the purchase of a new computer.
Oh.
They have us on a schedule where we replace so many.
You want to take that, yep.
Yeah. So I put that in.
In that line?
That line, yeah. And then, sure you know, that's our documents in?
Yep.
Pretty much the same, I just want to go.
Actually, all the other lines are pretty much the same.
They are, the website. I don't know what to say, janitorial supplies, mileage, office supplies, I think.
Okay, yeah, I would move town hall streams into this, get it off the other line, uh, other line, um. All right.
This is the laundry issue, the interest is going down.
Well, we're, we're almost done with that line.
Oh, you think it's up there?
I love the levels paid, and I think they don't.
So can I turn that, at our next meeting, maybe on December second, we can start, like?
The miscellaneous lines, yes, uh, let's not do that tonight. Uh, I, we'll do waste management, recycling, we'll do welfare, we'll do, um, ambulance, all the other miscellaneous lines that aren't part of particular departments.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're good. Now the actual in here?
Yeah, hopefully we can, uh, by next meeting or the twenty-first, probably the twenty-first, we'll come up with something that is close to being final for the line items that we're gonna operate on at the deliverative, we'll clean it up at the January meeting and then go to the deliverative.
Okay. And then, just so everyone knows, the budget here will be on January eleventh, Tuesday night.
Budget here.
At seven.
Yep.
Budget here. And then the, um.
And then, what date, eleventh?
Tuesday, January eleventh. Deliverative. Tuesday, February eight. And then the module election, March eight.
March eight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so if I forgot around what you said?
It'll be.
January eleventh, February eighth, March eighth.
I'll have a post, but just.
Yep.
You don't go on vacation.
Has anybody filed a hospital warrant with you yet?
No, uh, I do know about Jeff fifty thousand, the fire truck, two thousand for his tools or.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, and then did Celebration Committee have a five thousand dollar one?
They celebrate the five thousand for the anniversary.
So is that something that the select board will put in as a warrant?
Uh, yeah, we'll talk to them about it, and I'm sure it'll be.
And then we'll know, we'll have to put in a warrant. Cruise, do we have to?
No.
Do we draw those funds?
So, so if, because the police department's running under their number, we could actually maybe use the cruiser in twenty twenty-one.
Oh, you can cover the funds?
If we, that's, that's what we're talking, we talked about.
Okay. Long as you have invoice.
That's exactly what I asked from them, so that if need be, we're under, under a gun, we can encumber it. Um, because there's plenty of room in that budget, and I'd, I'd rather just dump it into that budget number, and Lord knows, we don't need to keep rolling things into twenty twenty-two.
And tonight on the agenda somewhere, there is an encumference for the Senator.
Coming up, yes.
As long as you're on.
Before you go. Um, any other questions on executive budget? Okay, so let's talk about equalization real quick.
Yes.
So, um, if you recall, last meeting, we received the equalization data certificate, which we need to sign off on, um, you know, we wanted to all get this more before we did, um, you know, the equalization, uh, numbers, um, as you saw on the back page, have been dropping, we're down at seventy-eight point nine percent. Mainly that is saying that, um, our market value of property is much higher than the assessed values that we have and are using for the tax rate. This is obviously due to the, you know, ongoing market, you know, for real estate. Otherwise, looking at the overall statistics, I didn't see anything out of line with some of the broader state numbers, um, but I'll open it up for questions or discussion about the, the data certificate.
I don't remember seeing that. Did we have that last?
Yep, it was part of last meeting, along with the contract for assessment, we held both of those over until this week.
And then it's a form, that equalization ratio, conscious broad information.
Right.
I mean, the state helps assisting, I mean, that equalization ratio.
Basically basing things off of the assessed value versus the sales prices in the town.
It's based on sales.
Yeah.
And then in two thousand and three, we'll do a rebal, and everyone will be at one hundred percent valuation.
Yes, or, or higher.
Higher.
Would be higher repastors.
So like right now, the whole town is assessed at seventy-nine percent valuation. Even the people who bought their house, they're assessed at seventy-nine percent valuation.
Right, they could, they, if they bought a house, let's, let's write to eighty, if they bought a house for five hundred thousand, they're actually only assessed, even if they just bought it last week, it's only assessed at four hundred thousand in town. And so it's that ratio that's being used to basically set, set, uh, you know, formulate tax, how much tax payments and tax rates we have. It's, it's just a, it's a fact of life that, um, you know, when we get a, when the state does a statewide appraisal, we'll ratchet back up to a hundred percent or maybe slightly higher, and then as sale prices then start to exceed that assessed value, that, um, that, um, ratio will then start dropping down to ninety-five, ninety-eight, seventy-five percent. But they, they, you know, they do a new statewide, um, assessment every, what, three years? Five years?
On the five year schedule.
Five years.
So are these numbers based on the fact, the assessment from five years ago?
No, that's, twenty twenty-one is at seventy-eight point nine, whereas in twenty nineteen, we were at a hundred and three point six.
Oh, wow.
So, again, the, the big change is due to the fact that real estate prices, especially with the C cause, are just going through the roof. And so even though our assessment is, you know, property is assessed at this based on the statewide valuation, the real market prices have been greatly exceeding that, which turns the ratio into, you know, four hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand market debt. So these are all based upon the sales data that Rod compiled along with the state to say, you know, this is, this is your municipal assessment data for the state to put into their calculations. Okay?
Sounds very cute, yeah.
It is, it is, so. I'll make a motion that we approve the municipal assessment data certificate that was provided by Rod Wood.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Today's date is, anyone?
Very.
Thank you.
Tomorrow's December four, no, it's not.
So in addition, um, uh, thank you for that, um, we also received the contract for Rod Wood at last meeting. I reached out to Rod to just talk about a few things in this. I had not received to call back. Um, I'm inclined to push this into the next meeting, um, given that I haven't gotten a response back, so I don't know if you have any questions or you.
No, it's fine.
Great, let's, let's move back to the next meeting then, that's great. Uh, um. Yeah, we have a tax collector's warrant built.
Yes.
Uh, yes. So, um, uh, tax collector warrant for Sue McKinnon, instructing her to collect the property taxes of two million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and seven dollars. Um, basically authorizing her to collect our taxes. I will make a motion to approve a warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, um. Uh, we have an intent to cut. Who's cutting?
The captain, Wayne O'Leary, to do something.
Uh, I'm on O'Leary. Got it. Um, so on the intent to cut, they have estimated amounts totaling, looks like fifty cords of cordwood, a variety of white pine hemlock, and small amounts of oak ash and beech.
Those are just estimates, but they report the actuals later when we tax them.
Uh, any questions about the intent to cut?
Is this the, um, development that's been disputed with the right of air, O'Leary?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all been settled.
Yeah, that, it's been, it's been approved by the planning board, and they, they have permission to move ahead. I don't think they've begun any construction now. This is obviously the intent to cut to allow them to start, I assume, putting in the rear of it and.
And once any change occurs, that trigger will probably change that.
Correct.
You might have to more money?
More, more revenue. Uh, you're good?
Yep.
Uh, I'll make a motion to support the intent.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. There you go. Intent to cut. Uh, we have a request for encumbrance from the cemetery committee, um, this is similar to last year. Um, they currently have a contract for clearing, um, not sure, my guess is that this is, they're not sure exactly when the timing will be. Um, oh, it's, we, then we scheduled to January twenty.
Yeah, certainly, I guess we had a moral storm that way, they.
In, in October?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was a bad storm.
Of course we did.
So, um, this is mainly for, uh, cutting and, uh, clearing some, uh, dead trees down by the, is it cemetery?
Yeah.
Um, and so they're requesting an encumbrance of sixty-six hundred funds, uh, in the current budget to be expended, uh, in January twenty-twenty-two. Any questions?
So is it an encumbrance when we take money from the current budget year and spend it in the next budget year?
You, you're basically, yeah, you're, you're allowing them, um, um, again, typically, it's, you know, expended at the end of the year, it rolls into the general fund. Um, this is where you get the, uh, unrestricted fund balance that we utilize at the end of the year in terms of adjusting tax rates. So what they're saying is that they want to expand these funds, um, for this year's budget, even though technically it will be next year.
Because they originally had it scheduled in October.
Correct. And, and, and you can't encumber just anything, it actually has to be under contractual obligation. So. That's why I asked them for the invoices of, for the, for the cruisers, because by doing that, if there's a timing issue, we can encumber the funds from twenty-twenty-one, which is where we want to run them.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the encumbrance request from the cemetery trustees.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Um, what do you think that we need to sign in here?
Oh, you want? All the encumbrance?
Yeah.
No, she just will leave in the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes, yeah, there's no formal statement required. Alright, um, special permit for mosquito control, uh, this is a special permit we do every year, drag and we'll file this on behalf of the town. This will allow us to have a permit in place if and when we, uh, basically move forward with mosquito, uh, control for next year. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for twenty-twenty-two?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye? Thank you. What do we have left here? So there's a, uh, just note, uh, note, please note that we received a correspondence from the New Fields Village and Water District regarding the main street building. We'll have a discussion with them, um, next meeting about this item. You should have a copy of that, Jenny?
Yeah, good.
Great. Um, we got that, uh, just as a note, um, the historical marker that was approved, um, and, um, uh, the, was manufactured by the Department of Transportation has come in finally. Um, they have state, is my understanding, they have state actually down on, uh, the corner of, uh, the Hilton property. Um, I've requested that the department give us an indication as to when they're going to be putting that marker in, they have not provided me any information as of yet. Um, I do know that the, uh, Historical Resources is requesting that when we know when we're going to basically unveil the marker, um, we're gonna invite them as well, I think the garden club is also interested in participating in ceremony. Don't know when any of this will take place, but I wanna make sure people are aware, um, that the marker, um, has arrived. Um, the, uh, New Fields Community Fund, uh, covered the cost to that, right, that we didn't need to go on the town budget for that. Um, and as soon as there's more information about timing, we'll let everybody know.
It's just gonna be where that half circle is behind.
Yeah, exactly, it's gonna be right on the corner there, uh, if you drive by during the day, you should be able to see, I, there's a little flag there and an orange, like, spray with it, I think where the DOT plans to put it.
And if I could just mention one more thing, just.
Absolutely.
Where, um, we will need to have a new boss control to game in, because this is a member of town because Mr. Blood passed away over the weekend. So we'll have to have the record made, and then we'll, and decide who's the oldest person, I believe it's Bill Keel, but, um, so then that's something that the select board will also.
Okay. So, anything else? Uh, anything else anybody else has? 'Cause all we have now is revenue and expenses, which, uh, given the duration of this meeting, Jack, you wanna just give it the minutes for the next meeting?
Yes.
And, uh, we'll do revenue and expense review at the next meeting as well.
Okay. Um, you have four correspondence letters coming in, is there anything?
Um, I, uh, no, no, I don't have any other letters in my package, yeah, I noted that too, I don't have it checked off, uh, in terms of, oh! No, uh, those are the ones we signed?
Yes.
Those are the ones we signed for what?
Oh, okay.
For the police chief. Great, so great, that's done. Um, one item I will mention, um, the planning board meeting this month, which I believe is the eleventh?
I think so.
I think it's the, uh, the twelfth, no, I'm sorry, I don't know. The twelfth, Monday?
The seventh?
The ninth?
Tuesday.
Uh, Thursday, it's the ninth?
No, it's a Thursday. I, uh, yes, tonight, nine to seventeen AM. So, um, one of the items that is on the agenda there is a discussion for, um, the Great Bay permits, general permits, that the water departments in the town has entered into, and the requirements to adhere to that permit. It's going to, basically, we need to have a conversation amongst the planning board, the select board, the, uh, the water department, and our road agent to come up with a, at least a, a plan to how to address the requirements under the general permit. It's mostly collecting data and filling up reports, but somebody in town needs to be assigned responsibility for it. Uh, and so, uh, the planning board is, um, welcome to attend that meeting, I'm encouraged if you can make it to go to that meeting as part of that discussion. Uh, not sure how it's gonna fall out, who's gonna end up being responsible for this, um, that's, it's gonna be an issue that we have to sort out amongst the four, four bodies. So I'm just letting you know, that's on the ninth at seven o'clock. Uh, alright, I, oh. I think there's a couple of manifests in there for you, I'll do the checks if you wanna get out of here. Uh, assessing contract, we're gonna punt.
Which, I'm sorry, which, which items did you defer?
Rod Wood contract. And then, uh, we're gonna deal with the minutes and the November records at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think that's it. Uh, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So you adjourn, thank you. So we shall see what that marker looks like.